Yeah. That's my, that's my last word. You know, it's like.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Feel you, I know that, that's a bad feeling.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, yeah, because I appreciate some time.
So I was walking and I had to.
Yeah.
Hey, you've become our facility director.
It's just painting around.
That's right. Your eyes are all good.
Okay, we did need the mission, mission stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Oops.
All right, we will adjourn the Board of Education closed session and reconvene the Board of Education open session at seven oh, no, seven o'clock. We'll use this clock over here tonight. Uh, Mr. Avante, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we would like to administer the oath of office to Monrovia High School Student Board Member Valerie Hernandez, Dr. Therosian.
Yes, I will stand with and ask that Principal McGinnis give us a little bit of information about Valerie before I swear her in.
Thank you, thank you for this wonderful opportunity. Good evening, President Gilliland, members of the board, cabinet, community members. It is truly an honor to be a principal at Monrovia High School. It is home to scholars and champions and tonight it's my privilege to introduce to you an outstanding young leader. Leadership is oftentimes handed to people in title and, and not until you build trust and, and build capacity and, and start to enact your vision do you build that sort of, of, of respect. And, and this young lady has done that. She's spent four years at Monrovia High School in our ASB as, as a member, as a leader, and this year as our ASB president. Valerie has the capacity to listen to her, to our student body, has the drive and, and inspiration to lead them to, and us together as a, as a school community to a future, a bright future. She's a dedicated young woman on our campus and in our community and it's with great pleasure that I introduce her to you and, and support her dedication and her service to this board as the student representative from Monrovia High School. Please welcome Valerie Hernandez.
Valerie, we have a copy for you, but if you would raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Valerie Hernandez.
I, Valerie Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
But so can you?
Okay. Um, I just want to thank everyone. It's a pleasure to meet you guys all and a big thank you to Mr. McGinnis. I love working with him at school. Every time I see him, just brings so much energy and saying hi to him. Um, I love being a part of my school and the community and I can't wait to work with all of you guys. Thank you.
We want to welcome you to the board and so glad to have a student rep again and especially such a bright and articulate young lady. So we're glad that you're going to be with us on the board and we don't really expect you to be here for every minute, like if you have a test or something the next day. We do always look forward to hearing your report though and, and, and just want to welcome you, hope you get to feel a part of this board, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, we will postpone Canyon Oaks Mountain Park Student Board Member Danielle hasn't made it yet and so when she does, we will move this item to that point in the agenda and swear her in at that point in time. Roll call will show that everyone is present on the roll call except for Danielle and we'll add her when she come. Closed session this date, we talk about potential litigation and no formal action was taken. Order of business, are there changes to the order of business?
There are, President Gill, Gillland, with the approval of the board, we would like to present an updated traveling conference.
So would you like to move that to action item? This is order of business.
We can, uh, we can move it to action and add the, uh, the updated form or we can just leave it on consent.
It's in consent.
It is in consent now and it is simply an updated form that references the conference that three of the board members and I will be attending next weekend.
So that form would be available for anybody in the audience that would like to see that changed form?
Yes, it is.
All right, in the lobby, I assume.
Yes.
All right, then we'll make that change but not take it off the consent. We'll change its place on the agenda. All right then, any other changes? Hearing none, we'll move on to the minutes of the Board of Education meeting for August fourteenth. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Dr. Therosian, were the two changes made? Okay.
Yes, they were.
Thank you.
Second.
Did we have changes?
There are none.
Okay. Ms. Huff, would you please take the vote?
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, uh, board member reports. Is Lockerbie?
No.
No, oh my god. Anybody else? I have one thing I would like to say, uh, since our student representative didn't really have a chance to talk too much. I want everybody to make sure to mark down Friday evening on their calendar. Uh, we had a wonderful opportunity to cash in on the guarantee on our field at Monrovia High School. And this summer we're able to put down a brand new field track and most of the cost of that was picked up by the company that originally put it down. So it looks wonderful and the rededication of that field is going to happen Friday night at six forty-five before the game. Uh, Monrovia High School Wildcats will be playing at seven against Alto Loma, is that right? Alto Loma? And you can come out and be a part of rededication of the field and watch a great football game. Last Friday night's football game was a great way to start this year, so. Mr. Hammond?
I'd like to just thank Mr. McGinnis on the football field for the addition of putting the school's establishment date. Um, it is a, you don't know what you're missing until you see what it was. We had the big M in the middle, it was great, but having the fact that when the school was founded is a great addition to that field. Good job, thank you.
Anything else? All right, we'll move on to reports from the superintendent, Dr. Therosian.
Thank you, President Gilliland, members of the board, just a quick update about enrollment. We are above projection, which is good, and we are still accepting students. For those of you who have forgotten, that school has begun.
All right. Public comments, the Board of Education encourages public participation and advise you to share your views on school business. Uh, please complete the addressing the Board of Education form that's out in the lobby and give it to our secretary, Ms. Huff, if you'd like to address the board. In order to accomplish board business in a timely, efficient manner, public input is limited no more than, to no more than five minutes per person per item. First, we'll go with public comments for items not on the agenda. In compliance with Brown Act, items not on the agenda legally cannot be discussed by the board. We welcome your input but are limited to asking clarifying questions, gathering contact information. Items requiring board discussion or action will have to be calendered for future meetings so that all interested parties may attend and provide input. Do we have speakers?
Yes, Board President Gilliland, I'd like to invite Chris Blanton to the podium.
Mr. Blanton, how are you tonight?
Uh, two weeks ago I was here to appeal suspension of Anthony Arnaud. Appeal was denied. We were supposed to receive a letter of denial and instructions to appeal to the State Board of Education. As of today, have not received it, so we're already at two weeks. Also need parameters of inclusion, of a letter into his personnel file, giving facts of case from our viewpoint. Last time there was a timeframe given, we received a letter on the twenty-second of August, which gave us less than four hours to deadline when board had four weeks to send the letter. The board insisted on a closed meeting on the fourteenth instead of open meeting. I insisted on open meeting on the fourteenth. I asked where to place a tripod to show pictures of, uh, the incident sold by Superintendent Therosian. She would need to view pictures before meeting. For some reason, she thinks she is entitled to control what is presented during public comment session. There's a little thing called the First Amendment that disagrees with her stand. Why do you think you can control what is presented, especially when it is detrimental to what viewpoint you hold? I refused to show the pictures to her and anyone else during meeting. Fifteen photos, sixteen by twenty inches were shown. Not one was shown on the TV camera. My face was. How is that possible during a public meeting in a public place? Did the board or employees instruct the cameraman not to show them? Or was it just a coincidence? After five meetings, there have never been a police presence during meetings. On the fourteenth, the presentation was made to introduce new school officer attended by the chief, a captain, and the new officer. They left during meeting but before end of meeting. Another officer was placed in the entry hall. An explanation would be encouraged. Anyone on the board want to comment? I've never seen a police officer here and then just.
Well, then you haven't been here when our SROs have been introduced because they're always here to be introduced every time we have.
They were introduced and then they left.
Okay, Mr. Blanton.
This was a different officer who was in, in the lobby area.
They, they are here whenever an SRO is introduced.
A different officer, not the school officer, not the captain, not the thing, the chief. It's amazing, I've asked during a two-year period that I've attended these meetings, not one elected question official has answered any question I have asked despite being able to respond due to the Brown Act. Selected officials, you're supposed to answer questions, but for some reason, from somebody who is critical of the Monrovia School District and the school board, remains unanswered. I will remain outspoken against what I view as things that need to be addressed. Any comments on board, I'll actually listen with an open mind, unlike some people present. Also, Mr. Gilliland, I want to give you kudos for last week for having me speak during the, uh, public comments instead of during the agenda, which limited me to five minutes instead of unlimited time. I learned a valuable lesson, so would you like to address or speak about anything I just addressed?
As I explained, this is just, all we can do is gather information. I've given you my phone number. I've offered to meet with you as a board member, not as a whole board, but we won't discuss items during public comment time. It's not agenda.
You are able to comment on questions due to the Brown Act. We've already discussed, uh, Mr. Hammond there who told me that they weren't and yet you are. You are allowed to briefly answer any questions during the public comment. Yeah, quote Mr. Hammond.
We're not going to comment on them, Mr..
Remembering the different Brown Act, so I won't waste any more of your time. Thank you for the phone call today. I do appreciate your efforts to, uh, reach out. I treated you respectfully on the phone. Uh, I disagree with your findings as a board, so with that, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments?
There are none.
All right, we'll move on to public comments for items on the open session agenda. Do we have any comment cards?
There are none.
All right, then we'll move on to informational reports and we'll hear about the summer facilities projects. Ms. Wu?
Yes, good evening, President Gilliland, Board of Education, Dr. Therosian, Cabinet, Cabinet member and the community members. Uh, this summer we focus on the two major project. One project has been finished, that is the MHS field turf replacement as, uh, Mr. Gilliland just mentioned a minute ago. The second major project is that we use the majority of the, actually almost all the project thirty-nine HVAC state grant to replace the Clifton Middle School and Plymouth Elementary School HVAC. That project, uh, ninety-five percent, um, finished and we are calling the project right now. So, um, I would like to invite Mr. Fernando Martinez, the Director of District, to present detail project.
Oh my goodness. I fix it. Best first behalf of MOT.
Did you have a work order for that?
Well, good evening, Board President, Mr. Gilliland, Board Members, Dr. Therosian, Cabinet Members and Members of the public. I am here to present proudly our summer projects. It's been a combined effort between the contractors, MOT staff and, uh, other, other, uh, other people that's involved, that has been involved throughout. So here we go. So as you all know, we started Prop thirty-nine HVAC project, uh, back right after the school, school ended. Um, total project cost was two point four million dollars. State Prop thirty-nine grant paid one point four million dollars and the district capital fund will pay the balance. So you can see we have quite a bit of activity. We have, uh, street closures and whatnot, but there were big cranes. I wish you were there to witness all that. We have, uh, irate, irate, uh, drivers, of course. But on your left, you can see, uh, obviously the, uh, our old HVAC systems, uh, not, some of them were, were non-functional. I was getting quite a bit of calls, but can you fix my AC? Well, we finally did it. These are the new HVAC units. They're beautiful, quiet, very quiet, energy efficient. This is Plymouth, by the way. So energy efficient carrier units, um, can hardly read from here. But the new units are sixteen seers and what that is, is a seasonal energy efficiency ratio. Rating, rating versus the old units that were nine to, to ten seers. So the higher the seers, the more savings we achieve. Uh, this is something, somewhere around thirty or forty percent of savings in energy cost. These are that much efficient. And here's a wonderful MHS football field. There was a lot of work that was done there amongst the contractors. Uh, you're talking about a hundred plus, uh, degrees in, in the heat. Have our staff as well, they did a wonderful job. They were able to save lots, uh, lots of money. And they work in conjunction with a contractor that was able to help us move the communication boxes. Also want to thank IT for, uh, helping out as well, logistics and, and, and whatnot. Uh, it, it, it was a huge project and you can, you can see it right there on those slides. So the cost for removal of the boxes was twenty-three thousand dollars. That was done by, by the contractor, MOT staff created and installed the new irrigation boxes. That's the finished product. That's our, our new boxes. If you recall, those boxes were also moved. Uh, they were in somewhere around twelve, thirteen, uh, fourteen inches into the field. So we decided to move them against the, the curve of, of the track. On the right, that's one of our irrigation boxes. That's one of, uh, uh, product of our MOT staff. On the left, you have a combination. You have the comm boxes that the contractor did along with our, with our, um, uh, irrigation box. Mr. Dennis that, who's here present, he was actively involved in that project and again, I want to thank you. Thank you and your staff very much.
Mr. Martinez, can I ask a question?
Sure, absolutely.
Just to clarify for everybody, um, can you explain what an irrigation box is?
So irrigation box is, uh, it's a box where, where you have the irrigation head. That's a cannon, um, um, what do you call it, Dennis? Cannon irrigation box. It shoots way far out there. That pretty much.
Sprinkler?
Keeps the field cooler than what it is, so it holds the, inside the, the sprinklers. On the left, you see the, the sections, although the section that, where the track was repaired. We also did the, uh, restriping of the track, repair as well of, of the track. So the track for surface and repair was, uh, the cost was twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars. We got a bargain. Here's our finished product. So MHS field turf replacement project cost two hundred and ten thousand dollars, two thousand, two thousand ten seventy-eight dollars. Um, what took place there was the regrading of the base. That was done, um, they use laser level, uh, equipment there to, to level our, our field. Uh, we added the cool play. I believe many of you board members experienced, um, how cool it felt and it still does, it still does. Uh, it's, it's said to be cooler somewhere around twenty to thirty degrees cooler than if you did not have that. And then, of course, the turf replacement. I mean, I just don't get tired of looking at, at the field. We also did some tree maintenance throughout. We're not done yet, uh, and we're trying to catch up. I believe during the last board meeting, I, I explained to you that, uh, we need to get out of the reactive maintenance into the proactive maintenance and we're doing that little by little. It's, it's, it's going to take a lot of effort, a lot of resources in applying them accordingly. So you, you see the difference there? Also, you know, it's for the health of the tree, that also saves us and, uh, a lot of those pine needles and leaves, they fall on the rooftops, they clog up our drains and guess what? Come rainy season, that's when we get all those leaks and that's when I get all the calls and, and all that and, well, that's preventive maintenance right there. Does it cost money? Yes, it costs money. Does it cost resources? Yes, it does. But that's where we want to get. There was also a painting of the cafeteria, there was other classrooms, um, um, and other painting projects that, that happened during the, the summer and continue to happen, but this was a, a big one. Our painter, uh, Mr. Segovia, by himself, he, he did that. The, uh, staff is very happy. I'm happy as well. Came out really nice. Mayflower asphalt replacement. On the left, you see the, the progress of the work being turned out. They told me that it was going to take about three, four days. I didn't believe them. I said, yeah, right? Took them two days, two and a half days. Cost four thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. There was a little bit of an addition there, you know, unforeseen conditions. It always happens, but you can see the difference. Before we have cracks about two, three inches wide. Staff tripping and whatnot, that's the result now. LED lighting upgrade. On the left, you see, uh, before and after pictures. This is also mayflower. You can see the difference. And that's, that's what we do when, uh, we, we get work orders to replace light fixtures and whatnot. Well, we're replacing with LED because we know that we're investing and saving money by doing that. If you have any questions, please stop me. Let me know if I'm going too slow, let me know if I'm going too fast as well, let me know, okay? MHS theater LED emergency lighting, we are complying. There's codes and regulations, set code and whatnot require us to have those exit lightings. And that's what, uh, we, we're doing. We continue to do that, okay? MHS baseball field. Uh, field improvement cost forty thousand dollars. Few weeks ago, there was a plan that was developed to detach that field. It was too thick. It was holding water. So you couldn't even mow that field because, uh, when we had, uh, moors going there, they would damage the field. So we were doing more damage than good. So it was determined that we were going to detach it. What, what does the, what does detach mean? It means thinning out that field. So it'll allow water to evaporate, circulate and whatnot. To do that, we had to turn off the sprinklers to let it dry a little bit. Otherwise, the equipment, the detach, detaching equipment was going to tear it up completely. So this is where we're at now, okay?
Um, I will take these pieces and, um, board, um, prior direction. We finished the facility needs assessment this year. So from that report and, um, the need is total $31.3 million. The good news is we do not have a facility that under, under the safety issue we have to address immediately. So, um, we had a resource right now budget around $8.7 million. On, and as you know, that our resource is limited. So we definitely need to prioritize our project. And the resource breakdown, different category. So based on the project, we will allocate the funding from those category to make sure that we, uh, improve, improve our facility according to, to the needs.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Can you go back to the, the other slide? Oops. From the capital outlay, you said 4.7
That's correct.
Million. Is that what we need from the capital outlay, um, fund? Or is that the balance that is in the capital outlay fund?
The, the available fund we have right now.
That's what's in
That's correct.
Capital outlay right now.
That's right.
And you're saying the $8.7 million is to address the facility needs based on the assessment that we were given a few months?
Uh, not, uh, not exactly necessarily. I would, I just recap what the need is and what the funding right now. So that the, we definitely need to prioritize our needs to make sure that I just the urgency first.
Prioritize.
That's correct.
So our priority needs are 31 million and we're going to prioritize them down to, uh, 28% of that, which is, uh, 8.7. That's, that's more than.
So which also mean that in the future, we will bring the project for board approval. So that's also mean that it is a plan that it, it, we have a project and then, um, also we probably will contact the side principal and get their input. They may reach out to their, the, the school side counselor. So then based on the, um, project, prioritize project from each side. Then we will combine the destroyed project submitted for board approval.
That's, that's what's going to be my next question. The 31 million priority needs don't include, uh, this may sound wrong, but it's not necessarily wrong. It's recurrent deferred maintenance costs. As you said just a minute ago, uh, we need to get ahead. We need to be proactive. And there's a lot of deferred maintenance needs, uh, in addition to the 31 million. So it looks like we have about a one-third of what we need. But in fact, we don't have near one-third. We, we can only do what we can do. And that bottom budget is all we have to do it with, so. I think you guys are doing a great job. First, to get those priorities identified and funds available. Now we just need to get that priority done and, and start, uh, making those repairs and changes while we can still make a difference on some of those facilities. If we don't, they will be much more expensive, so. Good job. Other comments or questions?
Yes, please. May I have a little bit more detail on the $40,000 for the baseball field?
Yes, um, how can I explain that? Because the practice season was approaching. And, uh, after the detaching and watering and, and the field, it was estimated that it was going to get back, uh, to being green within, uh, two weeks. And it started in one week. You started to see the difference. However, there was a push to get the, the spots, the brown spots repaired, uh, immediately. I, I want to choose my words carefully because...
Let me, let me, I think one of the, the MOT staff had a, had a good plan in place. It didn't go as quickly as we had hoped because, uh, while it did start getting green in a week, it wasn't in time for the baseball season and the baseball team to begin. And for, to make sure that we had, uh, a field that was safe for our students to play and practice on, we needed to take some more urgent steps. And so the MOT department came up with a plan to, to actually remove some of those areas and put in sod as opposed to just seed. Because it was not going to be ready in time for our students. And like any classroom, we need to make sure that our fields are ready for them.
Can I ask, of the $40,000, so some of that, was some of it or all of it the re-sodding? Or was some of that $40,000 also the re-seeding that you would normally do at about that time?
It was both. It was both. There was, actually, there was over 7,000 square feet of sod that was laid.
That's a lot.
On top of that, the field was aerated, re-seeded, uh,
Sprinklers also.
Sprinklers. It was a lot of work. It was, it, like, I, I want to repeat this. It was over 7,000 square feet of sod.
There's a reason I'm asking this question. So the money that was allocated for the, for the field, where did that money come from?
That money is, we always set aside certain money for the facility. So that money will be part of our facility.
Deferred maintenance or?
Um, we, um, we use actually facility monies, facility outlay money, not deferred maintenance. Because, yeah, deferred maintenance is, uh, do not have a high balance. So we just set aside that money.
And how much was the 7,000 square feet of sod?
They did not give me a, a detailed price. And they gave me an overall price for the work that needed to be done within one week.
Okay. I am not being critical of the work that's being done. I'm going to be critical of the process. We are the fiduciary oversight of this district. We were not consulted to take a position on how to expend $40,000 of district funds. I'm not going to tell you that this was right or wrong. The oversight, us, was not included in the process. And so I can tell you that that is wrong. It is dead wrong. I understand we have time constraints. But that is our job to decide how this district expends its funds. So I have an issue with that. The second issue is, is the field repaired now? Or do we still have other work that needs to be done?
This time the field, it's, it's done. It's done, uh,
Completely?
Completely. The sod has been laid down. We are watering that field, uh, three times a day. In speaking with, uh, MHS staff, we, uh, they, they're going to wait until next week, Saturday for, to let that, that sod take root.
Okay. And I'm, I'm down for the sod. But I'm saying the field in its entirety, infield, outfield is done. There's no longer pooling. The, the
Drainage.
Water comes off the field in, in a way that's appropriate and doesn't sit and cause soggy areas anymore?
It doesn't. It still pools by the dugout house. That problem has not been resolved.
Okay, so then it's not complete.
That was not the, uh, that was not part of the project.
The reason I'm asking this question like this is because sometimes, in the past, it has happened, where we have done worth, um, no, put in new carpet, yet didn't fix the roof. So when it rained, it ruined the new carpet. It's happened. So I'm asking this question is because we've now expended $40,000 outside the purview of the fiduciary body. And I'm asking, is the field complete and ready to go? Or are we fit, looking at more money in the future? That's the question.
To get that field done completely, the way we, i- it should be done, we need to, uh, spend more money. And first of all, getting the right, the right seed. That, uh, that seed that costs about $23,000, $24,000 that we need to get it every, every year. Right now, we're spending about $2,400 in seed. That's just, uh, that medium to low quality seed. We need to get that drainage, uh, addressed.
So the answer to the question is the field is not done. It's, it's going to be green for a minute, but it's certainly not done.
I, I mean,
No, no, let me, let me clarify. And first, let me apologize for not, um, it's my responsibility to communicate with the board about expenditures. And I, I apologize and I have taken your, um, guidance. I, I, I apologize for that. The second is, that field is good and ready to go. But if we want it to, it is not going to, it is not just for a minute. Where the water pools is in a, is in the dugout, in that cement area, not the field. And we have yet to come up with a way to get it to drain because of the manner in which that field is laid. It is, the grade of that field just pools right there. So we do need to continue to look for, uh, we looked at some drainage. We actually had a contractor come out and refused to do the job because it was not going to be the solution. So this is something we have discussed in the past. And we've yet to find a solution that will work or anybody willing to do the work and stand behind it. But if we want to invest in the field for that year-round green, we are going to have to invest more than $2,400 in seed. And that is something that we'll discuss. But the field is good and ready to go for our players for now.
All right. I, I understand that we addressed, um, some of the grass concerns. We have some flooding concerns. But I want to be careful when we say that the field is ready to go because is the baseball coach signed up on that's ready to go? Because baseball is much more than just green grass. The biggest problem is the infield. I mean, you typically have to re-clay that, uh, every so often. And that has to be leveled and it has to be packed. I mean, and that is by far the biggest safety issue, is a bad infield, not a bad outfield. It's a bad infield because you're going to get line drives, you're going to get bad hops, and that's when people get hurt. So before we say the field is, uh, ready to play, I want, I would like to have the coach tell me that it's ready to go. Not just based on our superficial, does it look good? But based on their, their concerns. So my, my concerns, coaching baseball forever, it's the infield. It's, that's where people get hurt. So, uh, that, making sure home plate is level or else people are going to twist ankles and, and everything else that goes with this. So, uh, my big concern is that the coaches sign off as all sports. All sports, uh, I don't want, not that you, the MOT is not an incredibly professional group. But I want the people who are going to have the bottom line responsibility for the safety of their kids signing off that they agree with it.
Yes, and, and in combination to maintaining this field, you know, we, we, uh, we work in conjunction with MHS staff, uh, coaches and, for example, coaches, uh, for years. And before I, I took, uh, position as a director, um, they have been assigned to, um, maintain that infield. And we, and again, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's a combined effort on both, on both sides. So yes, uh,
Well, you know, I can tell you, MHS has been spoiled horribly, uh, in, in the past by having a coach who, it was his second home to be out there with his own lawnmower, making sure everything was absolutely perfect. Right? I mean, so we were absolutely spoiled to have that type of, uh, loving care by one of our coaches. But I don't know that that's a reasonable expectation on an ongoing basis for not just baseball, but for all of our sports to have, um, our staff take that type of personal responsibility to make things our ideal. But they absolutely can and should be working with you to make sure that there's clear communication, what needs to be done and what the timeframes are. Uh, I mean, things happen over the summer, sprinklers break, what have you. I mean, I think all of that's understandable. But Mr. Hammond's concern is, is absolutely a concern. As we're looking at a screen saying we've got $3.1 million of needs and only $8 million to fix everything, when we're looking at a severe cost overrun based, when I say overrun, based on what our expectations were to get the field to practice level, that comes at a cost. We, that, that comes at a cost. So that's $30,000 of what? What else may have had a higher priority? And I think that's, that's our concern as a board is we need to be able to, to, to own those responsibilities of prioritizing where those funds need to go.
And, and again, that should be absolutely, I am, I, I own that. I do know that, uh, Mr. Martinez has been working closely with, uh, the Monrovia High School, uh, teams, administrative team, uh, and has met with, uh, the coach.
Yes, we met with, uh, Mr., Mr. Lohan, uh, Mr. Bell, the coach. We walked the field. We, uh, pretty much indicated what needed to be done, what responsibilities are what. And, uh, this was about a couple of weeks ago, a week and a half ago or so. So yes, we have been working with them closely.
And that will be a process that continues. And as we continue to communicate and identify better modes of communication to make sure that everybody's needs are met, we should be able to avoid these crunch times as we met this year.
That's exactly what I wanted to bring up, is that we do have a plan in place for maintenance, regular maintenance. There's things that have to happen throughout the year for this field. So, um, I'm happy to hear that that's being worked out. And so it, once those details actually get worked out, can that be shared with the board?
Of course.
Thank you.
I would like to, um, thank you for the creative way that you came up with, um, the ongoing maintenance. We had a memo last Friday that outlined some of the ideas that were there to take this into the future. I'd like to thank you all for coming up with those creative ways of doing it. I do have a question. And the other question is, are we addressing the needs because we're going to be having softball season coming up? And that field's going to have to have some attention too? Are we looking at that now in anticipation of having to address some of those needs? At the whole different part of the campus, I understand.
Let me, let me, let me jump in again. I think Ms. Wu omitted the slide that had two additional projects. One was softball, and I know that the conversation about softball has already begun with Mr. McGinnis. And the second, and I was going to actually ask for the update about, uh, the, the sidewalk, excuse me, the driveway on Colorado. So those were the two additional projects. I, I, it must be in a different form because that slide was missing. And so one is about softball. I, I do know that there has been discussion and plans about next steps to make sure that softball is in place. to make sure that softball is in place. And, uh, I'm not sure about the details of either that or the driveway, uh, condition on Colorado, 'cause those were the two outstanding, um, conversations that had been had between MOT and, and the board and the school, uh, since summer. And I wanted to make sure that that was all part of this conversation.
And maybe we can get an update on our weekly, on that?
And that's my plan. For, for the drivers, uh, driver, driveway, as for the preparations, is on my, um, tomorrow, uh, this Friday update is scheduled on September twenty-second, which is a weekend. And, uh, Ms. McGinnis and I, we met over, um, we met this way for over two hours. We're talking about we will get input from coaches regarding the improvement for the softer, softer field, softball field, as well as North Forty Field. So we want to make sure that, uh, the coach gave us a scope work, then our improvement plans according to the, the input from the coaches.
Thanks, and just one more thing, if I can. We walked the, uh, football field, uh, three, four weeks ago. Um, there was some netting that was used for soccer that was dragged out onto the field. Have we sufficiently educated, um, the coaches, assistant coaches, and players on how to move, move that equipment around so it doesn't cause a conflict that we saw with the new turf?
Interestingly with that, uh, Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Bell tried to move the, the soccer nets, and they do not believe that that was what caused the, the tear. Uh, we don't know what it is, actually, other than heavy machinery. Did, were you able to get a better sense of what caused it?
It's still a mystery.
Yeah. Um, however, conversations about, uh, appropriate use and, and placement of those nets have happened. I, I see the, uh, Ms. McGinnis indicating that that has happened.
Okay, so the, the conversations have happened. If, if that wasn't the cause of the wrinkling of the turf, there was certainly a skid mark that went across the, the track that was a direct result, because that's where the, it, it started and ended on the wheel there. So as long as we've had those conversations and people are aware, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, moving away from the fields for a minute, um, going back to your slide on the MHS theater and emergency lighting. From the pictures, from what I can tell, that's all inside, right? Inside the theater?
Yes, it is.
Okay. What I'd like to bring to your attention, and if this can, you know, be on your radar, right outside the theater, there's a corridor, um, that leads out to the parking lot on Madison. Okay, do you know where I'm talking about? So it's between the auditorium and then the parking lot. Um, we have a lot of events at night, and a lot of our young students are out there leaving performances, tech rehearsals, and what have you. And it's extremely dark. It's really, really dark. So, um, and if they're getting out at ten o'clock at night, which is very common during these performances, we need to have some kind of lighting. So I don't know if you can do something similar, LED lighting out there, but it's, it's a safety issue. Solar. Whatever.
Yes, of course. I will take a look. I'll take a look at that, for sure.
Thank you.
We'll come up with, uh, good solutions.
Great, thank you.
Thirty-one million keeps getting lower and lower.
I did wanna acknowledge, uh, not only Fernando Martinez's efforts here, but also Dennis's here. Dennis Rios is our, uh, ground, lead groundsman, and he has been a wolf pack of two for an entire year, and finally he has a, a team. And, and a four, yeah. And so it's nice to have... No, thank you for all you've done. Uh, I don't know how you've kept it going with always a smile on your face. So thank you for all your hard work.
Sure, come into the microphone though.
All the solid, all the solid that they put on, in, is gonna stay green all year round. So it is not gonna go dormant like the rest. And when we, uh, went and did fertilizer and seed, we put a sports blend that'll stay green all year round. So what we usually use is winter rye. The winter rye, as soon as the heat come, dies. And so that's why that baseball field goes dormant, or turns yellow. So, uh, Kathy asked me about, is there a little better seed we could get? 'Cause at one time, about five, six years ago, I got ahold of some sports blend that some of the good colleges use. That's eight dollars a pound. We're paying seventy-nine cents a pound, so it was gonna be twenty-three thousand. But I did locate some that is two dollars a pound. And so that's what we threw on there. We'll see how it turns out. And so, uh, we usually winter rye around, it's supposed to be around October, but the kids play till around November. So we usually winter rye at that time. But we'll see if the sports blend that we put on will stay green. Maybe we won't, and we always winter rye the softball field and prep that for them. The only issues we have at the softball field is when they put their solid fence or their stationary fence with their green, uh, mask or whatever you wanna call it on there, our sprinklers do not go through it. So that's why you get those, as you can see, they're still there. You get those brown spots. It's 'cause before we used to have a temporary fence that they'd put out game day, and then they'd bring it back, and then the sprinklers would do their job. So we have an issue there with the softball field. If you're gonna put a, a stationary fence, we'll have to figure out something. Try get water on the other side somehow, and figure out something.
Makes sense.
And then, basically, water drainage on the boys, 'cause we're at a slope. Since we defatched it, which means we took about, pretty close to three-quarters of that grass out of there, 'cause it was like a sponge, and, uh, the coach was worried about running. He hit a ball and rolled and stopped real quick. So he gave me the okay to defatch it. And so that'll help us aerate it, help us from the water running. That's one of the reasons we did it too. So hopefully, issues of water running south towards the dugout will be less of a hamperage there. So...
Thank you.
That should be about it.
Appreciate that. Thanks very much.
I have two things I wanted to mention. First thing I wanted to mention in regards to the football field is the completion of that beautiful field spanned two boards. And this has been an ongoing process for a very long time. And I think it's right and proper to acknowledge the previous board, which consisted of, of three of the current members and, um, and two, two of last year's, uh, board members. And I think it's right and proper to, um, acknowledge them and give them thanks for the work that they did to help bring this field, um, to us, because it's beautiful. So Chris Rich and Terrence Williams and, um, all of you here, thank you so much for that. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is Mr. Martinez. Um, and Ms. Wu spent, um, a long time with me. Uh, I think it was last week on the field. And, um, I asked to meet with them and, and ask them a lot of difficult questions. And I just wanted to thank you both for, for being so attentive and so willing and so forthcoming and so, um, calm and graceful under a lot of pressure, not just from me, but from all sides. And I want to appreciate the attention that you have given to the matters that have been, been brought to you, um, whether it's by administration or the community or the board. So thank you very much for, um, the work that you're doing. I appreciate it, and I appreciate, I saw you out there working hard as well. So thank you very much for that.
You're welcome.
Uh, one, one last question. Uh, I'm really happy to see that you guys made many projects done as, as you did over the summer, because these are all really disruptive type things when there's kids around. Um, but now that class is in schedule, how are the new HVAC systems working? Have we had any, any issues with any of the new units?
Not the units themselves. We've been adjusting, um, schedules. Now the, the thermostat are controlled. Before, they weren't. They were open. They were like, you know, temperatures were set at sixty to sixty-six degrees. We would have issues with coils freezing and whatnot. Uh, so it's an adjustment period. I think we, I've heard, I have heard the worst of it already. It's passed. So what I had asked, uh, the school side is to send me a schedule. Meaning, okay, from what time to what time do you want those, those ACs on?
So it's working as scheduled?
It's working as scheduled. And then I still get calls, you know, I'm, I'm saying till ten PM, can you adjust it? Or, you know, things like that, and, so...
Perfect. Just wanna make sure we're on schedule.
I'm sorry to ask another question, but, um, Brian brought up another question. Um, have you coordinated with Village so that, um, the Village, Village classrooms have temperatures that they need?
I did, and this was a couple of days ago. So I, I have been speaking with Tom, um, Mr. Santos. He has been part of identifying also the problems, and he has brought it up to my attention. And, uh, we, we have adjusted those schedules, especially over at Plymouth.
All right, thanks so much. He's got, he's got a lot of good work done. I think I would like for...
I just wanna, I just wanna show off...
These are the people that do so much work every day.
I just wanna show off my, my staff, please. And that's, that's the staff. I mean, wonderful, wonderful staff, and I have expressed this in many meetings. I've managed large numbers of people, small numbers of people. But this staff, it's, it's special. It's, it's great. On the right, it, that's, that's what we do. That picture was taken by that student's mom. She specifically asked to be posted somewhere. Well, we found it. We found that somewhere here. What better place than, than here? I wanna thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. T, could we get, uh, facilities, uh, priority? Put on our pending issues so we can get some dates scheduled and make sure we catch up with that priority. Move along with facilities work. All right. Moving to consent agenda. Routine items of business are placed on the consent agenda. They've been carefully screened by members of the staff and members of the board, and will be acted on with one motion. Is there any item to be pulled?
I, I just wanna clarify that the travel schedule is remaining on consent but amended?
That is correct.
All right, could we have a motion?
So moved.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended. All right, uh, Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
For Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
For Member Trevanti?
Yes.
For Member Hammond?
Yes.
For Member Wong?
Yes.
For President Gillan?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right, moving to action items. Uh, number one, public hearing for college and career access pathways partnership agreement with Citrus Community College District. Uh, Ms. Kaiser, would you, Dr. Kaiser, would you like to tell us about this?
Yes, please. Thank you, Board President Gillan, Board Dr. Trocian. The Board of Education has requested to hold a public hearing tonight to take testimony from the public and discuss the college and career access pathways partnership agreement between Citrus College, Community College, and the Monrovia Unified School District for the dual enrollment early college program prior to its adoption on September eleventh, two thousand nineteen. This is part of, this is, um, solidifies our early college program that we've had in existence entering our, um, third year. And this is as a result of Assemblyman Holden's, um, AB two eighty-eight, um, legislation that was passed several years ago, allowing high school students to take college courses concurrently, graduating from high school with col-, with many college credits.
All right. With that request for a hearing, I will open the public hearing on our agreement at eight oh three. And then, are there any public comments? Hearing no public comments, I'll close the hearing at eight oh four. And move on to item number two, an audited actual financial report. Ms. Wu.
Good evening, Board. Uh, I'm here tonight to present you for the eighteen ninety school year, um, audit I show. Uh, according to the, um, ad code, um, we are required to close book and submit to the, um, County Office of Education and as well as, um, Department of Education, um, before October fifteenth, and the Board have to approve before September fifteenth. So for eighteen ninety school year, um, here's our general fund, including unrestricted restrict fund total. And, um, we spent sixty-nine million dollars, and we received revenue sixty-six million dollars. And the difference between unrestricted restrict is, restrict is normally the state, um, federal and the local revenue, which the expenditure has a restriction for certain specific purpose. And the unrestricted is for all the district-wide operations. This is the comparison, uh, in the revenue side. The time when we submit for board for the adult budget, we projected the district revenue and expenditure versus when we close the book, what is the actual revenue the district received. So the category is, is, is the LCFF and the federal, state, and the local income. For the LCFF, when we close the, um, book, because, uh, we provided a study school, we have all the study, study school ADA recover. So, um, as a result, because the ADA increase, so, uh, local control formula, we will have, uh, uh, more revenues. For the federal income, uh, the way the federal income, um, counted as a revenue, it is different. The state gave us a revenue, it, it, we earned, the state gave us a check. We are not under revenue until we spend. That is just guideline. So when you look at, say, how come we, looks like our revenue compared with projection and actually looks like, um, thirty thousand less? It is not less. It's because we did not spend. It will carry over to next school years. So we, we actually did not, lost the funding. We just carry over spending the next school year, which is this school year. For the state revenue, because the state, um, gave us more lottery money allocated per ADA, so, um, as the result of state adult budget, so we projected, uh, higher than we, um, when we close book, the actual revenue will be higher than projection. And the local revenue, uh, we receive, um, donation, almost fifty thousand dollars in June. So we have a very supportive community. So as a result, that is not projected. So as a result, the local revenue actually increased also. This is the, uh, pie chart, um, show the how, um, the money we spent it. So eighty-one percent of the district money in general fund total spent to the salary and benefit. And, uh, books prices around three percent, and service and operation, um, around twelve percent. So, um, capital is three percent, the other is a contribution. This percentage is in align with the percentage when I present, um, back to second interim report, back to, uh, March of this year. Uh, this is the salary and benefit, the exact same percentage. The only shift is the capital outlay and the service, and the capital outlay is actually one more percent. The reason is, we finished the HVC project. So the grand project, we, um, the deadline is the, uh, this, this year, June thirty, the state extended to, uh, next school, uh, school year, but the requirement we have to incur. So because we finished, so, uh, we don't have this increments requirement issue. Uh, this is the, the, um, comparison between the general fund, the projection and actual. So as I mentioned, that the revenue, we, uh, we have more revenue because of the state, um, allocation and the lottery money. The expenditure of the special ed, uh, we, um... The expenditure of the special ed, uh, we, um, spend more than we projected. And the other thing is, um, the full service department. We know that, that department will cost more, but, uh, looks like, uh, the total, when we close book, the total cost, cost is more than we anticipate. So, um, as a result, the total any financial balance is sixty-five thousand lower compared with, um, June when we submitted board for adopt this, um, nineteen-twenty school year budget. These are the detailed breakdown, uh, which category, um, the net increase of the revenue and the expenditure increase. So, uh, the point I want to, uh, the other area, the special ed is kind of normal because, um, a lot of time, the vendor were not able to give us the emerors until after June. So when we do the June adult budget projection, it's difficult to know what is out there. So, um, when we close book, normally we, we know what they are. So we include it. So that's kind of, kind of common practice. But little bit, um, unprojected, let me rephrase, under project is the full service department, department cost. So the other fund is the adult education and the child development. The child development, we have, um, better years this, uh, last year because, um, they, there are any financial balance increase. This is a result of state fund of, funded more money for child development program. Because, uh, we, uh, look at the cost, we, um, had, uh, our director oversee the two project. So we, um, the cost is, um, less. The, um, full service here, um, I colored the red because when you look at forty thousand dollars, it looks like great. But out of this forty thousand, three hundred and six dollar, um, forty thousand, two hundred and six dollar is goods in the kitchen refrigerators. So really it is inventory. Okay? So the other fund is, uh, as the Board mentioned earlier, um, we have a deferred maintenance, any financial balance. That deferred maintenance funding is strictly set aside for the project, for preventive maintenance across the district. And the development fee this year, it is a good year, we starting spend the development fee because, um, Clifton, we have a more enrollments this school year as well as Mayflower. So good example use the money is, um, we have to take the wall between the Mayflower classroom forty-one and forty-two because of the enrollment. So that is a good example to use the development fee. That is a purpose of that funding. So we also, um, talk about maybe we need the playground at the kindergarten area at the Mayflower need to be adjusted because of, uh, increase in enrollment. That is also a good opportunity to spend, um, development fee. And as the Board recall that a couple of years ago, because Monroe Grow, we use the development fee to, for their playground equipment. So fee-based program is including the international students program, including catering program as well as the certain lease and rental program. So what is next step? Uh, we will, um, update our multi-year projection. Now we have, uh, enclosed, uh, booked for the eighteen-ninety school year. And, um, we are looking for the option to, um, reduce cost for the full service operation. And I, I will either report our plan in the board update or report to board in the board meetings. And, um, I want to thank to all my cafeteria staff and I already share the bad news. And they understand and they are very supportive. And I have, uh, Clifton Cafeteria Manager here, Richard. He is also our, um, the, um, CSA representative. So, um, they already had a meeting this week and, um, they want to support workers team and reduce the cost. The other things that we are already scheduled independent audit for the eighteen-nineteen school years. And, uh, the next thing is enrollment. Uh, Dr. Torzian already reported enrollment for this school year. And our school side principal, they all know the critical, the enrollment. They know that what they expect for, they're working very hard. As a matter of fact, this, um, evening, um, our principal for the canyon, he showed me that he will have two more cases tomorrow. So they all understand the importance and are very appreciative. We work as a team to make sure that, um, our, we kind of put a break. Uh, I don't know whether we have control, but, uh, we kind of work very hard and make sure that, um, do as much as we can to en- enroll all the students. For this year, um, as of right now, we are continuing decline. Uh, we are decline around eighty, uh, uh, I'm sorry, we're decline around thirty students, depending on which day compared with last year. But however, compare our projection, we kind of also above our projection around thirty students. And the good news is our special ed population is decreased. So which mean that our cost for special ed will be decreased because of the decline in special education populations. And, um, once the census data come, um, on the October 2nd, um, we find that days enrollment normally is the, the state official enrollment day for this school year. And I will, um, report to the board, um, when that come. And then the scheduled, um, reporter for the first interim reporter will be in December's board meeting. It's, uh, right before the, um, holidays. So any question for the unaudit actions?
I, I have a question. Could you go back to the actual versus projection slide for me?
Sure. Is that one?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So I noticed under ending balance, the difference, there was sick about sixty-five thousand dollars under projection.
That's correct.
And you had mentioned that, um, one of the issues was that we were paying more for food service.
That's correct.
Um, do you have a number of how much more we were paying for food service?
Yeah, thank you. The food service department, actually, um, the district have to support the program for ninety-seven thousand dollars this year.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars?
That's right.
So we were ninety-seven thousand dollars more than we thought we would be?
That's correct.
And that, that make, that is the significant contribution to that sixty-five thousand dollar, um, difference?
That's correct.
Can you explain why?
Okay.
Why that, how ninety-seven thousand dollars?
There's a couple of reason. Number one reason is state, um, short our food reimbursement at the fourth quarter. We receive a notice from the CD said that due to the budget, the information, budget reason and they were, um, lowered their meal reimbursement rate for us. As a result, we are short revenue for thirty thousand, thirteen thousand dollars because of that. And our food cost increased. Um, Board will recall that, um, around, um, April of twenty-eighteen, which is seventeen-eighteen school year. And, uh, when our vendor find bankruptcy. And then a couple of months later, the vendor we have were bought by, um, Golden Star. So now Golden Star food distribution distributor is the only major food, um, supply for the Southern California or the school district. So our food cost in, uh, increase over years, um, around ten percent. So, um, the other things is personnel cost. So that is why, um, I already share our team. That's why when we have any vacancy, um, we will make sure that we will use the, the personnel we have right now. Um, give them opportunity training and then, um, reduce the, um, manpower if we don't need it. Just like, for example, we, um, talk to cafeteria manager and, um, have them, instead of starting earlier, have them stay late, uh, starting late and stay late to cover the supper service. So then, when the supper to our employee, they resign, then we don't need to cover that supper employee position.
We don't need to replace that?
The place, that's, that's correct.
Just give the current employee some more hours and that will be a savings to us?
Yes. Either give the, the current employee, um, more hour or reschedule, um, the change of schedule for the cafeteria manager's, um, office hour to cover that, that period so that we don't need, um, have to have most helper from another employee that will reduce our cost.
So once again, the state does the usual thing, oh, we don't have enough money, so we'll give you less. And the buck stops down there with less money.
Yeah.
On, on the ten percent increase in the food cost, um, was that immediate after the other vendor got purchased? And so the competition went away?
That's correct. Because that impact us actually eighteen-ninety is a full year to impact. Because that vendor is actually, the, the transition is, uh, the, at the end, at the seventeen-eighteen school year. So starting last school year, we won't have one majority vendors. Of course, we are continue to looking for the small vendor who can provide us the better price and, um, same the qualities.
Okay. I, I, I want to, this is very interesting. So the cost of cheese changed from vendor to vendor, not because of a price increase to the cost of cheese?
Um, Mr. Hammond, the full service is a little bit, um, different because, uh, the, um, food, the material we will purchase is highly regulated. We can, um, I, I'm not quite sure. We can just go ahead and purchase anywhere because the, the food is, the, we, the meal we provide, each meal to each students have, um, requirement, the calorie, the vegetable, the fruit. Okay? And then the vendor, the production of the cheese have requirement too. So right now, there's a handful of few vendor available in, in the food service department is, uh, especially in Southern California. So that why-
Your, your answer is yes. So we're being, we're, we're being price gouged?
Yeah, we're, we're being, we're victims of monopoly.
Interesting.
You can look at that two ways. I mean, the, the vendor that went out of business was charging a lesser price. So maybe that's why he went out of business, because he wasn't charging enough. But however you wanna look at it.
Or are the prices are paying for the purchase of the old business?
Yeah, right.
I mean, the bottom line is this is how they're financing it. And now they have pricing or they have and, uh, at the very least, an oligarchy as far as there's only a couple of businesses out there. But absolutely, the prices went up when other company went out.
Competition went away.
Yeah, no lag time.
Okay. So we identified thirteen thousand dollars, um, in the fact that the state shorted us. So what made up the other sixty thousand dollars? Was it the price, the ten percent price increase and then the price of labor?
That's correct.
And can I get a dollar amount for each one of those?
Yeah, I will. Um, um, I will give you the board the, the breakdown.
Okay. Thank you.
I think you guys did a great job. I wanna just point out the fact that, uh, the ending balance projection was only sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars off-
On eight million.
On a fifty-four million dollar budget. It's less, less, it's, it's right at one tenth of one percent. So that's pretty good accuracy. From my budgeting days, when I was with the full service, that's pretty good accuracy. So thank you. Thank you guys. Great job. All right. Uh, moving on then to item three, resolution to establish a GAN limit. Ms. Wu.
Yes, President Gilliland?
Would you like to approve the unaudit action?
I guess we need to pass a motion on the unaudit action.
I'll, I'll move to approve it.
We have to approve the budget fourteen times a year. Any more, any more discussion? Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
All right. We'll move on now to item three, resolution to establish a GAN limit. Thank you for calling my attention. I would hate to go without-
We have to do that again.
We would have to.
We could have a whole nother presentation.
All right, Ms. Wu.
Again, Board, um, the California Constitution, Article, um, eight B, the government spending limitation, establish a maximum appropriation limitation, commonly called a GAN, uh, limit for the public agencies, including school district. The GAN limit, um, is intend to constrain the growth of the state and the local government spending by linking year, year-to-year changes in expenditure to change in the inflations and the populations. However, the GAN limit has become a largely pro-formular calculation that no longer constrain the government expenditure. That is because the limit has grown significantly faster than population subject to the limit. However, the Education Code Section four two one three two require that on or before September 15 of each year, the governing board of the school district adopt a resolution to identify the extreme appropriation limit for the current fiscal year and actual appropriation limit for the preceding school year. See, yeah, so that in for Monrovia Unified School District, um, our GAN limit for the eighteen-ninety fiscal year is thirty-six point three million, oh my God, it's not that. It is thirty-six point three million dollars. And the projected GAN limit is for the nineteen-twenty fiscal year is twenty-seven point one million dollars.
Can you explain to the board and public what the practical meaning of this is?
The, um, this is basically is a calculation say that, uh, the, um, public agency cannot expand in, uh, the, um, the appropriation limit. So it was very popular, uh, years ago. This actually is the, uh, approved by the voter back to nineteen-seventy-nine. So because the constitution has not been changed and ad code has not been changed, so we are still required for board approval. Basically, it's said that you cannot spend the, the limit. But impractically, it's not enforceable because, uh, the, um, the limit is, just like, uh, the School Service California say that, the, the, because the limit has grown significantly faster than appropriation subject to limit.
Any more questions? Go, go ahead, Brian.
No.
No, just, just leave that one right there. Okay.
No commentary.
Other questions or comment?
Come on, we have to have a GAN talk.
You.
All right. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Oh, did you amend the-
Did it need to be changed?
No, there's no amend, just reporting because it's, it's the ethical required, the, the board have to, um, approve.
Did you make a change when you were reading it, the numbers?
No, I did not change it. I just read, read it incorrectly. Yeah.
Okay, then I'll second.
All right. Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Lockerbie?
Yes.
Board Member Travanti?
Yes.
Board President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item four, or project change order number five. Ms. Wu.
Yeah, um, Mr. Martinez will be report, this is part of the provision of HVSC project.
Good evening again. Uh, well, I'm here to, uh, again bring another unforeseen condition. This is because DSA required, required us since the beginning to install the safety handrails. And basically what it boils down to, the, the law says from DSA that if a unit, it's less than ten feet away from the, from the, um, end of the roof, you have to install a guardrail. So we are following their guidelines. So this is, this is what you have in front of you. And the cost, you have a cost is somewhere around eleven thousand dollars. So I am asking to please approve.
Wait. Is the air conditioner already installed?
The cond- yes, they are installed.
It's already installed because the voltage has been changed.
I know, I know. I was being funny.
I had to.
I thought you were funny, Rob.
Thank you, Brian.
I wanted to ask, so the handrail has already been installed, but we haven't paid this yet. So you're asking for the approval so that we can pay it? Now, last board meeting, you came to us with some unforeseen expenses for this HVAC process. And it's understandable, but why is this coming to us now after all of these other ones, after all of these other ones?
Very good question. And that was the same question I had for the contractor. And the contractor knew I was not happy. Basically, he did say that his subcontractor just made a mistake and did not submit that one along with the other ones.
So the subcontractor should have known that we needed to install the handrails and didn't notify us until DSA?
No, no, this is just for the invoicing, the invoice of.
So he always knew, but he didn't, he didn't invoice it?
Correct, correct.
So we just got this invoice?
Correct.
Okay. So did we ask him if he could cut us a break on this after all the work? I mean, coming to us late and.
Oh, he'll cut us a break somewhere along the line. Somehow, some way, some, he told me he's gonna make, make it up to me somehow.
We appreciate his work. We do, we do.
Yes, believe me, I was, I was not that gentle with him. I just told him, I have to go out there again to the board and ask for this to be approved because your subcontractor forgot to submit it along with the other ones.
So the subcontractor knew that he had to do it?
He just, you know, he submitted some invoices, like the invoices, like the one we have, we had last week. But this one was, he just forgot. He forgot.
So he forgot the invoice. He didn't forget that the work had to be done.
No, the work was, yeah, exact.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Please clarify that. Because if you're standing there telling me this contractor was allowed to do work without our approval, then I have a problem. Because there's no way in this world that subcontractor should have done 11,000 work where the work without somebody at this district approving it. Now, if they just submitted an invoice and said, oh, we did some extra work because DSA said so. And we knew nothing about it before that point, then, then we need to work on our procedures. Because the extra work over and above the contract has to be approved by the district at least.
It has to be in the bond too.
So that was part of the whole project. That was part of the complete project.
The handrail was?
The handrail, yes. That was, that was already in the scope of work. It had to be done since the beginning. When those designs were approved by DSA, that was part of it. That was already, it was just a, one of those things that, you know what, I'm sorry, I forgot to, there's another invoice.
So it was in the original bid, we were notified at the very beginning that they were going to do this work. We agreed to have the work done. We agreed for the price. He's just late in giving us a bill.
Yes.
So you waited until, you waited until you got an invoice to bring the change order to the board?
No, I don't think there was a change order.
You approved work without a change order?
No, there was, there was a change order. There was.
When was the change order approved?
That was, that was a request for an information that was sent out some time ago.
When did your office approve this change order?
Wow.
Right at the start of the project?
Right when we came across this, this, this handrail. This handrail, what it was, it had a.
I don't need to know about the hand.
Okay.
I don't care about the handrail. I mean, if DSA says we have to do it, we have to do it. What I care about is this district's procedure in managing costs of contracts. So if our procedure is to say, oh, DSA said, do it, go ahead and do it. If it, you know, whatever it costs you, invoices, and then we'll, then we'll talk about a change order. If we're doing business that way, we need to change the way we're doing business. If, in fact, your office said, oh, $11,000 extra because of DSA requirements, okay, we'll cut a change order, then our procedure should say, okay, it's $11,000 change order. It needs to go to the board. I don't understand why we would wait for an invoice for that to come to the board.
I have a question.
Sure.
On the staff report, it says rationale. During the installation of the HVAC units, it was discovered that a roof area section at Clifton Middle School had elevated surfaces that required modifications to the approved installation of guardrails required by DSA. That is not included in the original scope of work. If I read that correctly, it says during the installation, which means after we approve the contract.
And Connie, when I talked to you earlier.
It was discovered in the rearview mirror, not foresight.
That, no, yeah, that. So I'm trying, I'm trying to figure out which came first. Because when I talked to you this afternoon, you said DSA, after the fact, reminded the contractor and the contractor should have known that. So I don't know if, I'm not exactly sure.
So the way it happens is that work was identified at the beginning of, of the project when it was approved. As they move along, when, when the contractor see the, the approved drawings, he goes, oh, I need to install one here. They came across and saw that the roof was elevated. And we reach out to the architects, to the engineers, tell them, architects, structural engineer, what do we do here? You didn't caught, you did not caught this. So we need to do a, this is an unforeseen condition. We need to do something.
So that particular handrail wasn't part of the original?
The assumption from the architect was that the handrail or the roof was flat and they designed it as such. So when, when the contractor went out there to install that handrail per the approved design, they said, oh, wait a minute, this has an elevated roof. The design shows a flat roof. So there's a contradiction there. They reach out, we, we reach out to the architect, structural engineer, and we ask for guidance. What do we do here?
So the architect made a mistake from the very beginning.
They did.
So soon the architect have to pay for it?
No, no, doesn't work that way.
Do we pay the architect?
Doesn't work that way.
Well, we definitely paid the architect. There's no question about that.
Let's finish going through.
I just want to make sure I'm understanding as we're going through. So the architect drew the plans incorrectly.
They missed that part, yeah.
Okay, then it's incorrect. He put a flat roof when in fact it was an inclined roof. When the contractor came out, he saw that there was an inclined roof and knew that a handrail had to be put in place because DSA regulations required so.
And the designed, yes.
So, so the engineer or the architect, no, no, the people who were installing the equipment knew that the plans were wrong.
Well, for that section, yes.
For that section. And so they said, you need to go back to the whoever and, and put something into place for a new handrail.
Well, yes.
Is that correct?
They reached out to me, yes.
So they reached out to you and said, this needs to be fixed?
Yes.
At that point in time, is that when you put in for a change order?
No, at that time and point, we asked for a request for information. So from the contractor.
From the contractor?
From the contractor. The, that's the way it works. You submit an RFI saying, we encounter these issues. We need information on how to resolve this issue.
Okay.
The RFI comes to us, copy to me, it goes to the structural engineer, and they review it. And they worked on a solution. And they provide the answer to myself, to the district, and to the contractor. Okay, this is what needs to be done. This, this, you know, an extension needs to be added, welding needs to be.
Okay, so you come to a conclusion in which you're all in agreement that this work needs to be done.
Right.
Right? So at that point in time, you put a change order.
Before you move on past that, the architect tells you what needs to be done, and that comes with the cost of that, right? Is there a cost estimate with that or is that a just, this is what needs to be done?
There is a cost and I express that to the architect. Those mistakes that you made, architect, is costing the district more money.
Right, right.
So yes, there is a cost because what the contractor did, they bid on, on what they saw on the approved plan, saying, okay, this is, this is what I'm bidding for.
So when you got the estimate from the architect, did you and the contractor then agree on a price for that guardrail?
No, at that point, there was no price. At that point, it was just, it was just the architect saying, and this is the solution. This is what you need to do. This is what needs to be done.
And he had a, and he had a cost estimate. You just told me he had a cost estimate with that.
No cost, I'm sorry, I didn't, no cost estimate.
So he just tells you what needs to be done?
Yes, he, he doesn't provide me with a cost estimate. He just.
Architect doesn't provide cost estimate. Okay, that's news to me, but that's beside the point. Now, so you know what needs to be done and you tell the contractor, that's what needs to be done, right?
Then, exactly.
And then does the contractor give you a price for doing that?
The contractor will give me a price for doing that, which is that price that we got.
And he doesn't do that work until you say, okay, that price is good. I mean, whether you negotiate, whatever you do, you come to an agreed upon price before he does the work. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so at that point, you knew what the cost was gonna be?
Yes.
And you knew that it required a change order?
Yes.
And so what happened that that change order didn't get submitted for approval until you got an invoice? Well, I mean, how long a period of time was that? Was it like two days or was it?
No, that was about a week, week and a half ago, somewhere around there, two weeks.
Are the guardrails indeed in place? Are they in place right now?
They are in place right now. The work, yes.
So the conversation that you had about you need a guardrail and because the plans are different than the actual, where did that conversation take place? At what point did that conversation take place? Over the summer?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
So at some point during this process, the architect and the contractor and you and DSA all realized that you needed to install a guardrail. That was different, that wasn't part of the plan. There's a change in the plans, the guardrail. When did that conversation come to you? When were you made aware of the need for a guardrail?
Well, the guardrail itself came to me during the initial start of the project when, when, when we sat down with the architects, when.
This, this guardrail. When did this guardrail?
We knew there was gonna be a guardrail there since the beginning. We just didn't know that there was, the roof was elevated. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, okay. Yeah, when, because that was a change. It was different. Adding, adding this guardrail was a change. So when did you realize that? And at that point, did you say, is this going to cost more money?
Oh, I did, I did. So I'm trying to estimate probably about three weeks ago or so? Three and a half weeks, somewhere around there, approximately. I don't remember the exact date. But yes, when, every time a contractor goes out there and finds something that's not in the original approved plans that needs to be modified, they send out an email to myself, to the team, to the architects. This is what's happening. Then they send a request for information, an RFI. Now, there's been, there is a process where, you know, there's a change order and we agree there was gonna be additional work, additional work. And maybe, not sure, maybe that's, the, the change order was not the correct wording to use there. It was just addition, it should have been additional work.
Wait, 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 wait. You really don't want to say, I forgot. You don't want to say this isn't a change order because that's what the motion is to approve a change order. It's over $10,000. There's a change in the work. It's a change order to the contract. I mean, that's by definition. That's what it is. It's a change order. Was this contractor allowed to do the work without a written order that said, do the extra $11,000 worth of work?
At that point, when the architect engineer came up with a solution, I just told him, you know, we need to do it. Let's, let's do it.
Verbal agreement.
It was a verbal agreement.
And he was allowed to do work without a written change order?
Yes.
So if he charged a $50,000, it would have been your word against his.
Well.
No, I'm serious. If, if he wanted to be dishonest about it and say, well, that was $50,000 worth of work. We have nothing in writing, do we? I mean, do you have something in writing?
Doesn't the bond have something to do with it?
Wait, 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 wait. Bond doesn't, no.
There's, we are getting, they are getting pay prevailing wage. So, which tells me details of what exactly what they, they did.
They're getting time and material?
That's prevailing wage, yes.
Yeah, okay. We can talk about this offline, but.
No, 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 you're asking a very good question.
No, no, we can talk about the details of it offline. My concern right at this moment is we're allowing contractors to do work without a written agreement.
The district has not covered at that point.
Right. And so we just need to, we need to look at the policy. I mean, this work had to be done. It appears to be a fair cost. I have no defense for DSA's actions and the way they handle it. And, and as far as errors in the mission on architects' plans, it happens. It always costs the, costs the owner more. You did nothing wrong on that end. My only concern about this is that our procedures do not allow a contractor to go forward with work unless there's a written agreement signed by somebody in this district and the contractor that says, this is the agreed price for this work or this is the agreed way we're gonna calculate the cost of this work. So if that procedure isn't in place, we need to revisit our procedures and make sure that provision is in place. All right. As far as this particular thing, it had to be done, had to be done when the contractor was there or it would have cost us more money. I understand all that. I just, it concerns me that we allow work to be done without written. And once it's written, it should come, if it's over $10,000, it should.
Absolutely, absolutely. And you are absolutely right.
So, so we just need to look at our procedures and sharpen that up a bit, I think. That's my thought. Other comments?
I just wanted to, you know, obviously, whenever you have constructions, there's, there's problems and there's changes. I mean, that's just the fact of how things go. And I know Ed's using $10,000, but I don't remember if that's what the, if the board's policy was to say, if it exceeds, you know, whatever that dollar amount is, then we need additional approval.
It was 10, wasn't it? We said up to 10 on change orders. You can bring it back as a ratification under consent.
All right.
Over 10 needs to come to the board.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
And I do understand that these things needed to be taken care of. I was just trying to find out who, I wanted to be clear about who discovered it, who communicated it with you and at what point.
And I hope I explained that and if you have more questions, I'll try to explain it the best possible, but that's how it works. Contractor goes off, embits off unapproved plans. They review it and they bid on it. And then when they discover a discrepancy, then they send out an RFI. An RFI gets a response from the architect, engineers, and ultimately, the, the district approves. and ultimately, the, the district approves or disapproves.
Other questions or comments? All right, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I, I'm gonna second this, only because I, I really don't think there was a problem with the work that was done, the cost or the, or the timing, because it had to be done when it had to be done. But we really need to take this as an opportunity to make sure that our policies and procedures are in place and that they're being followed consistently by, by all the various parties. Yeah, so with that, I'm, I'm gonna second it.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Ms. Huff, please take the vote.
For Member Wong?
Yes.
For Member Lockery?
Yes.
For Member Travanti?
Yes.
For Member Hammond?
No.
For President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries four one.
All right then. Thank you so much for staying and explaining all that to us. It's very complicated, I know. Uh, moving on to pending board issues. We're gonna add the facilities project list to that? Other changes that we need to be aware of?
There are no other changes.
All right. Anything for anybody else to add or subtract? All right, all business. Our next regularly scheduled Board of Education meetings are at seven PM on September eleventh, September twenty fifth, and October ninth. Uh, we have several back-to-school nights scheduled. That schedule is on the agenda. We also have the MHS field grand reopening, and I'll reiterate, Friday night, six forty-five, we're gonna reopen that field. And at seven, there's gonna be a great football game between MHS and Altaloma. Uh, and we're gonna have students out running around on September second, because it's Labor Day, and they'll all be out of school. And on October sixteenth, we'll have the State of the Schools address. It'll be at Monrovia High School. And what's the time on that? That's gonna happen at six?
Forty-five.
Six thirty. All right. More information will be coming out on that. All right, any other newer business? All right then. Tonight, we would like to close this meeting in honor of Bob Zamiripah. He's the father of Santa Fe Computer Science Middle Magnet School Principal Jeff Zamperipah. Bob passed away recently. He was a proud Monrobian for over forty years. He was a native son of Los Angeles, attending, attending Wilson High School in El Sarino. He served in the U.S. Navy and began a successful career as an electrical distributor, electrical distributor. Education was always important to him, so much so that Bob donated to the Monrovia School Foundation often. Although life did not afford him the opportunity to attend a university, he wanted to ensure that others were able to do so. He's endowed a scholarship through the University of Southern California Latino Alumni Association, enabling one Wilson High School student to attend UCLA without any cost every year. Bob was so proud of Jeff when he became principal at Santa Fe and was here in May two thousand seventeen for his introduction to this district. Our thoughts and prayer are with the family tonight, and we close at nine, or at eight fifty-one. What? Did I, did I get the wrong school?
So what's up with the noise?
We'll talk off, Rob. I'll call you tomorrow.
Did you find me a paper screen on Friday?
Okay. I, I don't know. Did you text me, or are you?
Terry, we're gonna be on the panel, and I was gonna do the paper screen.
Okay, perfect. I missed it. I was obviously doing something today.
Maybe they'll pick better this time. You never know.
Well, I am so happy Terry is on the panel. So she can't say I don't listen to her, because, or them. That was not the case.
I'll let them know tomorrow that their wish came true. Yesterday, they said, yes, we'll do that.
Yeah, because Jenny, Jenny wanted to be on there. I was like, I just told her, I said, you gotta talk to Ann. I'm not in charge of that.
I saw those two first, and I know that Sped has been an issue over there.
Yeah, it's great.
Terry has had multiple concerns.
Harvey, she can see the process on hindsight.
Well, how do I come teach my fifth period class? I'm time to go soon, so I don't have to start taking my sick days.
Yeah.